All right, we'll call this meeting to order at exactly nine o'clock. I guess if we could all rise for the singing of our national anthem. All right. So do we have any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, could I get a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? Counselor Gamanna, all in favor? Carried. Any corrections or amendments to, or corrections or amendments to 3.1 September 27th, 2017, regular meeting of council? 3.2 October 2nd, 2017, special meeting of council minutes? 3.3 October 25th, 2017, organizational meeting of council minutes? Any corrections or amendments? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adopt all of those minutes? Counselor Peebles, all in favor? Passed. So moving on to 5.0, the delegations. 5.1, third quarter financial update, Mr. McMillan.
Thank you, Your Worship Council. Thank you for having me. I'm just here to provide a quick update through the third quarter operating financials for the town. So through September, we've been running a $6.86 million operating surplus. At this point, we're projected to have about a $6.07 operating surplus at this time, so that leaves us with a $788,000 net surplus. This is largely made up from expenditures coming in below budget. That makes up actually 781,000 of that number. The other 7,000 comes from overall revenues. There are a couple trouble spots, mainly on the revenue side, one being in planning and development. This primarily due to some unrealized grants not coming through. And also on recreation, this more or less just being an overall, due to economic factors and demand not being as high as initially projected. On the positive variance side, all other functions are coming in under budget for expenses and generally at or above revenue expectations. From general operation, administration, protective services, transportation, and utilities are all performing to expectation or better. So overall, things seem to be looking fairly good for 2017 fiscally.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any comments or questions for Mr. McMillan? All right. So we'll move on to item 5.2, the September and October RCMP stats. So welcome Staff Sergeant Callahou. And if you turned page 199 of your agenda, that's where all of the stats will be.
Good morning, everyone. And a lot of new faces, so good to see everybody. Just going to kind of go over a little briefly. The document that you have in front of you, for those who haven't seen it, what it is, it's a document that's generated by our district analyst and provided to us in order to present to you its whole years report. So basically, this goes through, it has year-to-date, and it has a month, monthly comparison as well. So just because there's a January to September one, as well as a January to October one, I thought I'd just do the January to October, because it kind of seems counterproductive to do both together at the same time. So moving to first of all, our assaults. We can see here, and that would actually be on the second set of documents that I gave you, so it'd be January to October 23rd, 2017. Our total yearly assaults right now, the incidents that we have reported is 102. It's up from 73 this past year, 2016. When I drill down into those numbers, now, I guess just the one thing I need to clarify about this before I go any further, is that the incidents are all reported incidents. So it doesn't mean that they all necessarily are, it could be that unfounded, it could be that it's not going to charge, the client's in charge of it, right? So in this case, for the year up to the end of October, there's 28 incidents that actually went to charge. So by that, they were ones that were, charges were sworn, and they went before the courts. In those cases, probably about three-quarters of them were unfortunately family violence related. So that's something that's to go on the plate. Intended those incidents that claimed the client to charge, so where there was grounds to charge, however, they declined to proceed because they didn't want to report, whatever. There's some incidents where if we have physical grounds, proceed anyway, family violence being one of them, we will proceed regardless of the choices of the prospecting of law. Four of them, again, were departmental discretion, reported those assaults. And usually things like either kids fighting with one another, or someone pushed someone else, and it was one of those things that you could be dealt with in a different way. Eleven of them were unsolved. These normally happen with some combatants at the bar, guys getting in the fisticuffs at the bar, and by the time the police show up, and we try and get there fairly quickly, they've taken off. Normally, no one says who it is, that type of thing. Three of them that we have are recent ones, they're still under investigation. Twenty-four were unfounded, which means that they didn't meet the criteria for criminal charge. And 12 of them are known as unsubstantiated, where they're reported as an assault, but after investigation was found that it didn't meet the criteria. So that's the assault side. I'm just going to do some quick hits on a few of the other ones here. Sex assaults, it says there's 13 here for the year, 10 last year. This jump is due to a number of historical incidents that were reported. We'll ask Counselor Cannon to explain that too, because it's a high number. Basically, there's eight files where there's three that have multiple incidents. Again, mostly historic. Moving to our break and enters. Says we have 98 break and enters per year. It's up from 82 when I drill down into them. Forty-six of the incidents were in businesses, 40 of the incidents were residential. Two were people that were unlawfully dwelling, basically where they're not invited to guess, that type of thing. So one was a break and enter to a motor vehicle to steal a firearm, and six of them were declined to charge. In the residential ones, two of those went to charges, they were either found at the scene, or they were using the proceeds of those thefts. So in this case, it was credit card, we got them on video, we were able to backtrack that way. So in the businesses, there was six incidents that went to charge, and normally in those cases, they were found at the scene or shortly afterwards. And a couple of those, basically dogged, tracked, or really have been tracked and get them. Our theft of motor vehicles are up from 83 to 59 last year. When I looked at the quarterly statistics, I looked at the past few years, the high time usually hits in the second quarters, that would be April to June, just to kind of get some perspective for this year. January to March, we had 10, April to June, we had 30. And June, or July to September, we had 23. That kind of follows a pattern, year to year, where it's kind of in that range where that goes. So the trend should lessen in the fourth quarter, if it goes that way. I'll speak to it more when I get monthly statistics. Moving to our drug enforcement, it's on the next page. Excuse me, I just got a bit of a cold here, so. We had one production charge this past year, and then last year, year four. That was based off of tip that we received from the public, so we were able to follow that with search warrants and get into that property. For the possession charges in particular, there's 38 incidents, those 12 went to charge. Six were departmental discretion, in that case, there's no case seizure. So say, for instance, someone has a single marijuana cigarette on them. Normally, the amount of work to process and that type of thing in a charge, or else there's elements elevated, and you can use officer discretion to have us know it's a no case seizure, where he sees the drugs, and then they're being processed accordingly, and then is destroyed after he gets authorization from Health Canada. So that's that timber unfounded, where they were not found to be actual possession incidents and intent, and they were unsolved. So I'm just going to move into the monthly information, so I'm going to have to flip back. Normally, I don't present two months at a time, so it's kind of going to be a little jumbled back and forth. With the September stats, on the monthly stats. So for the month of September, we had 13 assaults. Of those, three went to charge, they were all family violence-related incidents, and they all went to charges. Three of those, they declined to charge, one was a roommate that had pushed another, one was a substantial fight, where both parties decided that you could help. And another, where the person declined to proceed. And again, one was unsolved. Again, you'll see the fight at the bar, where the bats are gone, 40 were unfounded, where there's no grounds for charge, and two were unsubstantiated, where we could not form enough grounds to meet the elements of the offense. I did note that there was one incident of an attempted abduction. In that one in particular, I went ahead and drilled down into the file, there wasn't enough information for us to be able to realistically pursue it. Obviously, a fairly serious incident, we had that type of thing going on. We even brought in a sketch artist to try and establish some sort of grounds. There was no hits in any of her databases, but there wasn't enough information for us to release to the public, and we'd like to have exactly a little more than just any other work, whatever the case may be. In that case, we're still keeping our eyes open for anything else, but since September, there hasn't been anything. We go into the theft of motor vehicles, there's nine incidents. Two of those went to charges, and seven were unsolved. Five of those vehicles, however, were recovered in a short time later. In the theft under category for September, we had 29 incidents. Something to bring to everyone's attention is the gas and dashes. Of those five, those were gas and dashes, people filling up and then not paying for their gas. In the other cases, various power tools, some that we were able to get serial numbers for, and they're listed on our system. Great majority of the theft under, though, is shoplifting from stores. So various items, whether it's food, or whether it's small items from stores, in particular Walmart, seemed to get hit, but it is September. With regards to our possession of drugs, three of those went to charge. All of them were traffic stops, we got one guy with methamphetamine, and two with marijuana in those cases. In our false alarms category, just down the bottom of the page, the second page, we were up from last year from 14 to 25. For the most part, we're getting called off. We've had some violation tickets issued for attending false alarms. Usually what that happens then is after that, that we get our call-offs more frequently. There's some businesses that we get more than one call to, but we're seeing that we're getting called off after that, so it seems to be working. Some of the things that we are doing locally, that were indicated by the town, is some priorities. School patrols, with the, starting at the school, we've been asked to make some priority in that area. We did 40 patrols in that timeframe for September. We submitted also 17 patrol logs. Now, what these are, is patrols that are above and beyond our normal course of duties. So we try and track where we're going while we're doing, just maintaining visibility in the area. And 63 tickets were written for the month of September. When we move into October, so that will be the October monthly stats. Looking at the highlights for the persons categories. Assaults were down in October, from 12 last year to eight this year. Two of those incidents were at the skate park, where charges related against some youth. One was a family violence charge, where there was charges related to that case. Two were still under investigation, in the recent timeframe, we're still looking into what's going on with that. And three were classified as unfounded. The other side, on our persons crime with the other threats, there's one that's still under investigation, so that's still being looked at. With our break and enter, we're down from 11 last year to nine this year. I'm looking at the specifics. Five of those were unsolved, where there's no evidence for us to proceed further. Two of them were still under investigation, and two were found to be unfounded, that aren't actual break and enters, they were just mistakes by the reporter. Theft of motor vehicle, we had 20 incidents. I looked at this. I looked at when these things were happening. We had, on October 16th, we had one of our private offenders that was out of jail, arrested. So before October 16th, we had nine incidents, after, we had three. So we suspect that he was involved in quite a lot of those, but the problem is, linking them to him is a different story. So again, I can touch on the habitual offender side of those, there's a factor we can, if we're dealing with a drunk.
Yep.
So, and we also had one that was at the end of the month, in October. This one was actually led to several detachments being involved, and they tried to corral these guys. There was one follower truck, and one that was stolen. We were finally able to locate the residents where they were at, it was outside our jurisdiction, but ultimately, that led to a bunch of search warrants, that people getting arrested there. So we were able to get that way, but unfortunately, we were actually able to get the people inside of the vehicle. In our theft under category, we had 16 incidents. Of those, one was charged with theft of liquor from one of our local stores, eater, unsolved, and four of those are gas and dashes, and three of them are still under investigation. Pardon me. With our possession of drugs, we had one that was a traffic stop for heroin. That subject was arrested and charged, and we've also had one of our local dealers that was arrested in a traffic stop with possession, from there was some trafficking with methamphetamine. So he's currently spending some time in a vehicle. We also had 19 false alarms this last past month, which is on par for last year. Again, we're seeing a good majority of those were getting called off, but we issued two tickets as well with that. So in October, we saw a great ramping up of our school patrols. We had 175 school patrols during school hours. As well, we had 68 patrols above and beyond our normal duties, and we also had 46 tickets written for October. With that, the only other thing that I could talk about is, usually on the last page of each package, is a RIT. Now, this RIT, on sideways on your page, has the lines on it that show what are looked at as issues, which is within the norm for the area. So again, some of the flags that we have, again, we've got thefts, I think I can kind of explain that, in these cases, some of our habitual offenders, it's a one-man crime rate, until they get caught, we see a spike in those types of things. When it comes to our break and enters, certainly, we have some issues with our, when it says other, that's things like upbuilding sheds, that type of stuff, with people breaking into sheds. And again, our sexual assaults is up this year, but I think because we explained it, it was due to our historical reports, that kind of inflated that number somewhat. So with that, I don't think there's any questions we can add from our council.
All right. Well, thank you very much, and thank you for getting us caught up on two months there. Is there any questions from council regarding anything? Counselor Butts?
Good morning. First question, you mentioned that these are the reported crimes, and so of course, there's a number that aren't charged or followed through on. What is the rule of thumb for the percentage of crimes that go unreported?
The percentage of crimes that go unreported, so you're saying that don't come to the police?
Yes.
That's a good question, because ultimately, we rely on people who report to us in order to be able to generate the statistics that we need. One of the things that I try and relate to people that we serve in the community is, I'll use a quote from Sir Robert Peel, basically paraphrased, that he's known as the father of modern policing. What he says is that, the police of the public, the public of the police, is that the police are charged by the public to enforce the law, that type of thing. But the public is also, has a duty to report crimes to the police and let them know what's going on, right? So it's a two-way street, and what we're hoping is that, if we can get the word out to people that we need to hear about these things, whether it's the gas and dashes, I can say right there as an example, in my conversations with our gas owners, our stations there, I know of people of those that'll never come to the police. So if you want to look at that as a statistic, I wish we did see more of that, because I'm going to earmark a higher problem than was actually there. So whether or not businesses are reporting them, or saying, oh, no, it's, we're not going to do it, we want to see those numbers. So we want to see what's going on, because it also hits on the trends of where things are happening, so we can focus our resources accordingly. So without that, it's kind of hit me sometimes.
Thank you. Another question, you said that you try to get to scenes as quickly as you can, what's your average response time, and how does that compare to historical?
One of the things, when we come to, when we get these calls, it comes down to whether or not we're tied up with an other call at the time. Again, we're not like a city force, where we have a great deal of people, and we have like one or two-minute response times. If it's a priority one, we try and get their lights and sirens as soon as we can. But it really depends upon the urgency of the call. I think that for some things, and again, I don't want to make it sound trite or whatever, but there's some things that we have to, we have to look at what our priorities are in the area, what calls we get in a year. If we're at an assault, and we get a call about a break and enter, we have to deal with the assault, we'll deal with the assault first before we get to the break and enter. And that's also with our resourcing as well. So if we have a certain amount of resources on, we have to use those where they're most effective at the time. And we try and get to each call as soon as possible, but again, to give you an actual five minutes or three minutes, I don't know if I'd be able to do that for you.
Okay.
My last question was, looking at the year-to-date numbers to October, across the board, everything is up. I was just wondering what your views are on that, and what you're doing differently to address it?
Well, it's something I was going to address on our GMP meeting.
Okay.
But I can say to you that, yeah, we are on the way up. Again, 2014, when I got here, we were very high in our numbers. And then from there, when the whole boil that hit, and we started to see a decline in our numbers for the next two years, in 2015 to 2016, that has since changed. And we've seen in town, a 20% increase of our calls in town, you know, year-to-date. So we're seeing kids pick up.
Thank you.
Turn your mic off. Any other questions? Counselor Gamanna?
So in this report, it says that intersection-related violations has gone up, and it's an issue. Can you elaborate on that?
Well, when it says that it's an issue, and intersection violations have gone up, that means that there's likely more enforcement that's been done there. That's like, when it says issue, what it means is that there's a deviation from the average. So in this case, when it says, now, which one are you looking at, September or October? September.
September, yes.
Yeah. So in this case, we've had 16 incidents versus 12, but if you look at the, if you look at the, at the years previous from 12 to eight, so if you saw from 2013 to 12 to eight, when you hit that, that would be, no one adds a deviation or an issue. Then you go to 12 and 12, and then we're up to 16, so that would be another, what would you call an issue? It could be a matter of there's enforcement, or that we've written more tickets in a particular area for that type of thing. So I don't have the specifics for you, but if I was looking at that as an argument with these, that would be probably the best answer to get on that.
Thank you.
Any more questions? It's the one question I have with a little bit more clarity coming to July 1st and the legalization of marijuana. Is that something you guys are starting to be more cognizant of, or are you, is the RCMP getting any more clarity as to how this would be handled?
Well, that's a good question. Legalization of marijuana, there still is quite a bit of sorting out that needs to be done, I think, in this area. We're obviously going to follow the legislation that's enacted. Right now, it's still illegal, so for all those people that think it's okay, it's not until the, until the law actually passes, possession of marijuana is still illegal. So the issue has to come down to is that, some of the things that I would like to see is, we are starting to see some things from K Division, the implementation of more training for drug recognition experts. We are starting to see that there's, they're starting to lay some foundation for what we need to do in order to be effective in that area. But, you know, I'll be honest, I still have concerns. But until those, until those questions are answered, and we see what it looks like when it actually comes into play, it's tough, it's tough to give a definitive answer to that.
Yep. Fair enough. All right, there's no more questions, and I, thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Just before I move on to 6.0. All right, so we will move to decision item 6.0, and 6.1 will be the board and committee appointments. I guess if I could ask Doug Whitten-Smith to come up and give us a quick background on the Drayton Valley Municipal Library Board appointments.
Good morning, Mayor Dirksen and council. Oh, I pressed the button, I pressed the button. And apologies for my shaky vocal rendition of Old Canada, I'm dealing with a cool. And I don't, didn't know the protocol. So I'm just going to provide you with a little bit of background on the Alberta Libraries Act, some maybe new to municipal and provincial. But the Libraries Act is a legislation, what is it, C chapter L 11, and it outlines the makeup of library boards, including the regulations that accompany the act. Then it's up to the boards, or the councils, the municipalities, to establish an agreement for how many representations from elected council are appointed to the board, and then depending on the makeup of the community, how many appointments from the communities served by the library board are appointed by councils. So we have one appointment from the town of Drayton Valley, and one appointment, an elected official from the Brazo County. elected official from the Brazzo County on our board. The terms for an appointment typically run, unless you're an elected official, but the board typically serves for three years. And this past, well, I guess this year, as of October thirty first, two thousand seventeen, three of our, our board members at large, our trustees at large, had finished an appointment, and that included Pat Adamson, Colleen Anderson, and Brenda Cartwright. Pat Adamson and Colleen Anderson are residents, so Pat Adamson is a rate payer for the town of Drayton Valley. Colleen Anderson and Brenda Cartwright were rate payers in Brazzo County. Now, according to our board bylaws, our library board bylaws, we are supposed to have three residents at large from the town of Drayton Valley and two from Brazzo County. So that left one position from the town and two positions from county of Brazzo. They still, regardless of where they're rate payers, and which community they're representing, the board is the town of Drayton Valley Library Board, so all appointments come through, through decisions by this council. We advertised the vacancies, three vacancies, and received four applications, two of which were requests from these serving trustees to continue. That was Pat Adamson from the town and Colleen Anderson from Brazzo County. So they would like to continue on with another three year appointment. Further to that, we received two additional, two additional applications for services trustee, and that included Donna Galwolko from Brazzo County, and I'm just going to check my notes here, and she was, she was looking to have a three year term, and we had one application from a town resident to come up for, but she was only looking for a two year appointment. So what we are requesting of council today is that Pat Adamson and Colleen Anderson, representing one position each for the town and Brazzo County, be reappointed to the library board, and that Donna Galwolko, resident of Brazzo County, be appointed to the library board for this upcoming term, which will expire, it will run from November first, two thousand seventeen, to October thirty first, two thousand twenty. And that is the short and the long, and I hope that all made sense.
No, that's, that's good, and, and that was probably the best rendition I heard of of Canada in these council chambers. You usually have a, someone else singing it for us, but we appreciate that.
Thank you.
So from there, is your counsel like to make a motion on this? Counselor Peebles?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm going to appoint Mrs. Pat Adams to as a town member of the community at large, and Mrs. Colleen Anderson is a county member at large, as well as the appointment of Mrs. Donna Galwolko as a county member of the community at large. These appointments would be for three years, and then with that expire, October thirty first, two thousand twenty.
Okay, so we have a-
For the Drayton Valley Municipal Library Board. Should say that as well.
So we have a motion, is there any comments? Any, anyone want to talk about this? If not, all in favor? That is passed.
Thank you very much. Were there any other questions regarding understanding of the Libraries Act and how the board works?
Any questions?
Thank you very much for your time, and for your forgiveness.
No, thank you. So now we're to comment on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Similarly with the library board, of course, appointments to the FCSS board are also done through town council. The FCSS board, of course, operates underneath the Town Bylaw, ninety-eight fourteen, and the composition of the board consists of one member from town council, one member from Brazzo County, we have one member from the central region of Child and Family Services, and four members of the community at large, representing the Brazzo County, the town, seniors, and youth. So with that, the advertisements for the positions went out, and we had three positions that were becoming vacant, membership for Mr. Bob Barker, who is our seniors representative, and of course, had been for several years, so it's, it's something that I think we have to recognize, Bob Barker, for his commitment to the FCSS board, for sure. But we've received one application for that position, membership for Mr. Eric Butts, who was a town community at large representative, was also expired, and with the recent, of course, election of Mr. Butts to council, makes him, of course, ineligible to reapply for, for the position, and the membership for Lacy Suzinski, youth representative, is, has also expired as of August thirty first, and three applications were received for that. So the positions are available here, all three positions are for two year terms on the FCSS board, and of course, discussion in terms of representation, not just from some of the individuals that are eligible as a town representative, but also could be as a youth representative as well. So the information is presented for council's consideration, as well as the applications themselves.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll deal with these individual motions, so is there anyone that would like to make a motion for this senior representative? Counselor Ballas?
I move-
Turn your mic on.
Technology. I move that council appoint Mr. Wendell Smith as the senior representative for the FCSS board for a term of two years ending October thirty first, two thousand nineteen.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions or comments, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? That has been passed. So anyone like to make a motion on the appointment of the town community at large representative? Counselor Butts?
I move that we appoint Mr. Kayden Dewish as the town community at large representative for the FCSS board for a period of two years.
Okay. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor? That is passed. And the appointment of the youth representative? Anyone want to make a motion?
Counselor Butts? I move that council appoint, where is it, Palte, as the youth representative for the FCSS, two year term, ending October thirty first, two thousand nineteen.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? That is passed. All right, now we move to the Brazu Foundation, and Mrs. Druzen, again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appointments to the Brazu Foundation, of course, in terms of the membership on the board, consists of two members from the town of Drayton Valley, two members from Brazzo County, and one member from the village of Bratton. The Brazu Foundation manages, again, through mandate, through provincial ministerial order, a number of programs, social housing, seniors housing, the old family and individual housing programs, they also manage the town's urban housing program, and the direct tenant rent supplement program. So with the positions, with the position, the one position that was expiring as of October thirty first, two thousand seventeen, the position was advertised, and one application was received from Mrs. Jeanette Bader, who is no stranger to the, to the Brazu Foundation, nor to our community. So the information presented includes her application, as well as letters of recommendation coming from individuals for her reappointment back to the Brazu Foundation. So this information is presented for council.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion for the Brazu Foundation Board? Counselor Ballas, with your mic on?
I move that council appoint Mrs. Jeanette Bader as community member at large for the town of Drayton Valley on the Brazzo Foundation Board for a one year term ending October thirty first, two thousand eighteen.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? That is moved. All right, so now we are moving on to decision item six point two, community grants, fourth quarter allocation, and again, back to you.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. The town council has approved an allocation of funding that is directed to the support of community initiatives and community efforts, community groups, community individuals. Three different grant programs have been instituted in the last few years. One is the community event grant, second one is the Roger Coles Memorial Sports Grant, and the third one is the Youth Arts Heritage and Culture Grant, each of course recognizing contributions by our community and the efforts of our community to, to add to events and activities for our residents of our surrounding area. Within the community events grant, October second was the deadline for applications, and it is the fourth quarterly allocation, of which there is five thousand and one dollar available for distribution. This, of course, consists of five thousand dollars for this quarter, as well as one dollar that remained from the previous quarter of two thousand seventeen. Three applications were received for this fourth quarter underneath the community events grant. One was from the Drayton Valley Health Services Foundation for the Festival of Trees Gala Dinner. Second was from the Eleanor Pickup Art Center with the Alberta Culture Days, and the third was the Toronto Maple Leafs Alumni Hockey Game Committee, which is being hosted for February seventeenth of next year. The second grant, the Roger Coles Memorial Youth Sport Grant, again, it's recognizing those individuals within our greater community who have dedicated themselves to achievement in sport, and we've, again, we contribute to funding to, to individuals and teams who meet that eligibility requirements, and that's done on a quarterly basis. The deadline was October second for this last quarter, and ten thousand dollars is available. This consists, of course, the quarterly allocation, twenty-five hundred for this quarter, but also seventy-five hundred dollars, which was not distributed through the course of two thousand seventeen from previous quarters. We have one application that was received, and that is from KCJ Heinz, who attended and participated with Rugby Canada National Championships. The third grant is the Youth Arts Heritage and Culture Grant, and again, recognizing the importance of those activities within our community and highlighting anything from visual art to literary, theatrical, performing arts within our community. Also recognizing heritage, whether it's multiculturalism, or with the indigenous peoples. The fourth quarter, again, the deadline was October second, eight thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars is available for distribution, this consists of twenty-five hundred for this quarter, and the remaining six thousand seventy-two, which was allocated for the previous quarters in two thousand seventeen. So the information that has been presented to council includes each of the applications, as well as the options available for council. The one item which needs to be repeated is, of course, from the Roger Coles Memorial Youth Sport Grant, application from KCJ Heinz. Since the production of these documents, there was an approval of one thousand dollars from Brazzo County to help out with that individual, so just need to make sure that that is information that council is informed of.
All right, and so we'll start at the top in regards to the three applications that we had for the, I'm just drawing a blank on the name of the grant, community event grant. Is there a counsel that would like to make a motion in regards to the Drayton Valley Health Services Foundation and their application? Counselor Gamano?
I'd like to move that for the Health Services Foundation from available funds of five thousand and one, we'll allocate one thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars.
So one thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars. Is there any discussion on that? None? Oh, Counselor Peebles?
I'm just curious as to why that choice of number is really my thought for thirteen fifty-five.
Okay. Counselor Gamano?
Okay, we have available funds of five thousand and one dollars, and as we know from the Alberta Culture Days application, they've asked for two thousand two hundred and ninety dollars for their application, and so we've, I pretty much divided the two, what's left for the two other applications.
Okay. Is that satisfactory?
Well, just, and obviously, this is a decision we can make together, but I think there was even a note in here about for the Toronto alumni, that they could reapply again in the new year, I think that was even mentioned in there, so my thought would be is that we, we look at them as maybe our big, big contender in the next discussion, and kind of defer it there, and then figure out what we'd like to do with the other funds.
The one comment I will make on that is, while we're still in the budget process, we haven't decided one way or another if we'll be continuing with the grants, I'm not saying that we will or we won't, but if we do defer them to the next quarter and then decide that we're not going to move forward with this granting process, it is something that we need to be cognizant of, so. So a motion of one thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars to the Drayton Valley Health Services Foundation, all in favor? Okay, that is passed. Motion for the Eleanor Pickup Arts Center. Counselor Butts?
I move that council award the Eleanor Pickup Arts Center two thousand two hundred and ninety dollars to help cover the costs associated with the two thousand seventeen Alberta Culture Days from the community event grant fourth quarter allocation.
Can you turn your mic off? Thank you. Is there comments on that? So all in favor? That is passed. And lastly, the Toronto Maple Leafs Alumni Hockey Game Grant, is there? Mr. Ballas?
Before I speak to the motion, my mic just broke. Could we have, ask a question on this? They're also asking for donation in kind, I believe, in addition to funds. Is there some discussion that we can have on this, or can we defer, having committed the thirteen fifty-five, but also looking further into the donation in kind?
Okay. Mr. Divin, do you want to comment on the in kind donation?
Just to understand Counselor Ballas's question, Mr. Mayor, Counselor, are you asking in terms of the application for the Health Services Foundation, or was this in regard to the Toronto Maple Leafs Committee? Certainly, Mr. Mayor, in terms of then being able to have a discussion along those lines, a process would require that a motion be put on the floor, and then there could be discussion along those lines. Certainly, it is council's prerogative to put forward a motion of a support in kind in terms of providing an offsetting amount for the facility, that would certainly be under council's purview, to look at support other than in a hard monetary fashion, and that's something that council would like to put forward for discussion on that in council's decision, that could be considered in advance of a hard monetary request, or as referred to earlier by Counselor Peebles, a potential for a deferral on, on a particular grant consideration until a, a different quarter.
Okay. So with that information, would anyone like- So with that information, would anyone like to make a motion to open it up for discussion? Counselor Gomana?
I'd make a motion to give one thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars from the Community Events Grant to the Maple Leaf Alumni Hockey Game Committee. Thank you.
So there is a motion, and is there any discussion on it? Counselor Ballas?
I'd like to see that deferred with the, that sort of amount just being unallocated at this time so that we could further discuss the donation in kind.
Can I ask for a comment on the granting process, just so we're aware? Can we carry over on a fiscal year? Or is it, sorry, we've carried it over from one quarter to the next? Mr. McMillan, would you be able to comment on that?
Well, we typically don't carry it over quite in that nature, but we can certainly add a added provision, but that'll be an added expense in next year's budget.
Okay. So if it was, if we had to carry this amount over till next year, that is a possibility?
We can add that amount to the next year's budget, but it will be an additional expense. It won't just be last year's money, it'll be next year's money.
Gotcha. We have the motion of one thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars being awarded to the Toronto Maple Leafs Alumni Hockey Game. All in favor? All opposed? It's carried. So moving on to the application for the Roger Coles Memorial Youth, is there a council that would like to make a motion on that? Counselor Dods?
I wish that council would K C J Heinz seven hundred and fifty-five dollars to help cover the costs associated with attending the Rugby Canadian Canada National Championship from the Roger Coles Memorial Youth Sport Grant Fourth Quarter Allocation.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? That is carried. And, sorry, I can't remember, and that's if you mentioned that the applications for the school trip, they were not within the guidelines of this grant. Sorry, I couldn't remember if you touched on that or not.
Mr. Mayor, you are correct. I did not mention that the applications for the Youth Heritage Culture Grant were ineligible to, for consideration for that grant.
Okay, and since they are not within the guidelines, we will not be proceeding with any of the grant applications under the Youth Arts Heritage and Culture Grant. So we will move on to decision item six point three, the Electronic Sign Policy A dash zero five dash seventeen. And if I could ask Ms. Stone to step up?
As you are aware, this policy had a couple of changes. The one just made some clarity around the fees for charities, local nonprofits, and businesses just made it easier for us to understand. And also we added... And we added a couple of points six and seven that provides the manager of the town needing to remove signage to put up something semeschaling and telegraphing.
Okay. As for a motion, I will just put the public service announcement out there that we do allow charities and nonprofit organizations two free weeks to advertise on our board, and then they do also receive a discounted rate after that. So that's my public service announcement for the day. So is there any member of council that would like to make a motion on this? Counselor Peebles?
I move that council adopt the Electronic Sign Policy A zero five seventeen as presented.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? That is passed. Thank you. And moving on to decision item six point four, the Municipal Credit Card Policy TF dash three dash seventeen. And if I could ask Mr. McMillan to give us some background?
Thank you, Your Worship. So the town currently have a credit card policy, and it was found that many other municipalities did, and that it was felt that we, it would be prudent to formalize a policy to cover credit cards issued by the town to staff and to our elected officials. This is designed to fulfill the parameters and to complement the existing purchasing and tendering policy the town has. Within the document, which kind of outlines permitted expenditures, it's meant for smaller purchases, non-capital in nature, operations related, travel, accommodation, registrations. Basically, any exceptions must be signed off by the C A O, many examples of which are explicitly stated within the policy itself. Also, formalizes a required cardholder agreement to be signed by any holders of the cards and tracking responsibilities associated with holding a card that are now formalized within the policy.
Excellent, thank you very much. Would anyone like to make a motion on this? Counselor Dods?
I approve the credit card policy TF three seventeen as presented.
Any discussion on this motion? All in favor? That is passed. We can have a break after the decision items. So we'll move on to decision six point five, and I'll ask Ms. Wigglesworth to give us a background on that.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Council. On June thirtieth, an application to subdivide lot eighteen, block thirty-six, Plan three, four, three, one, K S into two lots to accommodate a duplex was received and filed through our subdivision agent, who is West Central Planning Agency. The property is located in a mature neighborhood. The area in which the proposed subdivision is located is classified as general residential or R two district, allowing for construction of duplex and single detached homes. West Central Planning conducted a site visit on August second, twenty seventeen, noting that the duplex was currently under construction and that power was installed to the building. Access and parking to the property will be from the laneway in the rear. Given the size of the subject area, the reserves are, there are no reserves owed on the land as it is less than two acres in size. West Central Planning received no letters from adjacent landowners during the referral process and extended the period to allow for late submissions, none were received. No comments or concerns have been received from other agencies or utilities. Drayton Valley's land use by law stipulates there must be three parking stalls per dwelling unit for new duplexes. The duplex must comply with necessary parking requirements, which are established as a condition of and addressed under the development permit. The proposed subdivision complies with the land use by law, and West Central Planning recommends approved subject, subject to, or sorry, recommends approval subject to seven conditions. So administration recommends that council approve the subdivision outlined by West Central Planning with the seven attached conditions.
Okay. Is there someone that would like to make a motion on this? Well, I believe we do the motion first, and then we can go into discussion? So we need a motion first, and then we can go into discussion? Would you like to make the motion? Motion what you want? Yes? No, you don't want to make the motion? Oh, sorry. Counselor Gomana?
Make the motion that we adopt this resolution as presented.
Probably...
Need to go through the...
Yeah. If you just read A. Counselor Peebles?
Okay. So I'd like to move that we approve subdivision application DV slash seventeen slash zero two for the creation of individual titles for the land municipality described as five zero seven two dash forty-four street. This will allow the two houses of the duplexes currently located on the lands to be established under separate titles and owned individually.
Okay. Any more, I guess we probably need to reference the seven conditions as well? Can we just make the motion to include those seven conditions?
The conditions are...
We need to read all seven of them, but...
We approve the following seven conditions.
Okay, so the, we approve it following seven conditions. The conditions are, number one, the developer is to engage an Alberta land survey to prepare a plan of subdivision for registration and land titles of it subject to the attached subdivision drawing detailed June twenty-first, twenty seventeen. A, please instruct you to use the town block numbering system. B, if the property is to be sold or mortgaged in the near future, it might be advisable to have the survey do a real property report when they visit the site to deal with subdivision. However, that is not a condition of subdivision approval. Point two, enter into a, and fully comply with development agreement with the town of Drayton Valley under section six five five of the Municipal Government Act. This agreement must include, but is not limited to, construct all necessary approaches, drainage, water and civil lines, and other utilities to serve the proposed lots. The development agreement will specify the standards of these improvements. Number three, the landowners shall register part, party war agreements concurrently with subdivisions. Number four, the developer is to pay any off-site levies required by the town of Drayton Valley's bylaw. Number five, the developer is to contract, contact the utilities, in this case Fordis and Atco Gas, to determine whether any new utility services and or easements are required and provide written confirmation from the utilities that any necessary arrangements have been made. Number six, the developer is to pay any outstanding taxes owing on the property to the town. And number seven, the developer is to pay an endorsement fee of hundred dollars per lot, two lots equal to two hundred dollars to West Central Planning Agency when the plan is submitted for endorsement. Thank you.
So we have a motion to approve the subdivision with the mentioned seven conditions. Is there any discussion on this? Counselor Dods?
I was just wondering if we could bring up a land location or aerial map if we had of... It wasn't in the package.
Do we have? No, so we don't have a map, but it is located close to Peace Park area. Does that... Up towards Mackenzie Avenue?
Your concerns were met, Counselor Dods?
With the location, yeah. I would just request that maybe for further subdivision, if we could have a land location and aerial map included?
We can certainly address that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Gomana?
So in this, it states about parking space required three. Would attached garages considered as parking space, or how does that work?
Good morning, my name is Martine, and I'm an active planning and development officer. The question about including the garage for parking, it is including the three stalls required. So if it's a double garage, then would include those two as installs as well?
Counselor Dods? WTPA received letters from adjacent landlords during the referral process. How are they contacted in order to provide those letters?
If you send out letters to the adjacent landlords, we give them a timeframe to return any comments.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? So the motion ahead of us, all in favor? That is passed. So moving on to item six point six, the Recreation and Culture Cost Sharing Agreement, the Brazzo County Correspondents. I will provide the background on this piece, if I'm allowed to. So this stems from the past councils approving on September twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, during a regular meeting of council, to renew the Recreation Cost Sharing Agreement starting January first, two thousand eighteen, till December thirty-first, two thousand twenty. And as per the terms of that agreement, the funding contributions for each party was based on a fifty percent of the average operating deficit in the previous three years. And so I had received a letter from their reef on November eighth, and the county had made a motion, which was carried unanimously, and I will just read it out here. Moved by A Heinrich to direct administration to send a letter to the town of Drayton Valley requesting to continue the Recreation Cost Sharing Agreement negotiations and to two thousand eighteen to offer the opportunity for both parties to be compliant with the intermunicipal collaboration framework requirements and consideration of development of a recreation board that comes with terms of reference as a result, as a result in the current three-year agreement as is for two thousand eighteen. So the request was to take the exploring agreement and extend it into one more year, which would be two thousand eighteen. So I may as well ask for a motion from someone, and then we can go into discussion on that piece. Is there anyone that would like to make a motion? Sorry. Is there someone that would like to make a motion on this? Counselor Dods?
I wish that council would authorize the Brazzo County's letter of November eighth, two thousand seventeen, excluding an interest in the, in consideration of the development of a recreation board with terms of reference, but extend the current agreement for one year at the revised cost sharing levels. So the two thousand eighteen, twenty, twenty, contract agreement before one year.
Can we make that motion?
Counselor to make any motion?
Okay. So. If you don't mind, just allow me to write that down. So the motion was for, for the mayor to respond to the Brazzo County's letter expressing support. Sorry, can you just go through that? Sorry, can you just go through that again one more time so I can write it down?
The council authorized the mayor to respond to Brazu County's letter of November eighth, two thousand seventeen, expressing an interest to consider the development of a recreation board, including terms of reference, but adopt the, uh, twenty eighteen to twenty twenty cost sharing agreement framework for one year.
Okay. All right. So just for clarification, we're asking for a one-year agreement, but at the twenty eighteen to twenty twenty levels?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, now that we have a motion, um, is there any discussion that we would like to have on this? Councillor Ballas?
If we look at what the county is proposing, uh, what would be the percentage of their input and what would be the percentage of ours, or do we have a dollar value?
There is a dollar value. I don't know if Mr. Dibman wants to comment on this, but, um, the agreement, um, that the past council passed in September twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, um, would equate to both the town and the county paying just under one point one million, so one million ninety thousand, one hundred and one dollars and seventy cents each. And so that is the, the dollar amount that the county would be paying. So, that's correct. So, um, my comment on this, um, motion that we have, I definitely agree that the town is more than willing to enter into, um, a recreational, what my thoughts are, that I would be willing to, um, discuss with the county of Brazu, um, a recreation board. I think that would be a step in the right direction, um, specifically with the intermunicipal collaborative framework agreements having to be done. My preference would be to continue into the, the three-year agreement that council passed in September twenty-seventh. And then if both parties agree, we can always, um, remove this from the agreement until new agreement has come to fruition. So, um, I don't know what anyone else's thoughts are. I'd be curious to know. Any more comments? So, all right. So we're going to vote on the motion that, uh, we respond, um, with our interest in a recreation board, but moving forward on a one-year basis at the two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty levels. All in favor? All opposed? It is carried. As a side note, um, how is this going to reflect with the current agreement, um, having to start in January first, two thousand eighteen? Will this delay the process and what happens if we don't agree on a new recreation cost sharing?
Um, I, uh, I, I might ask Ms. Resin if, uh, if, uh, her, her opinion is different. My understanding would be, Mr. Mayor, that in September, uh, town council had passed a renewal of our current agreement based on the methodology, which was to take the previous three years and use that as the averaging basis for what the respective cost contributions would be. With council's motion today, uh, authorizing the mayor to put forward a different option, if that was to be, um, received positively by the county, uh, administration would need to go back and basically revise, uh, the draft agreement, uh, to reflect, uh, council's desire today, uh, as well as presumably the county's aspect. If this was not done by December thirty-first of two thousand seventeen and a new formula is not in place by that time, the old formula would hold in the interim, uh, which means rather than the one million ninety thousand, uh, that we are getting from Brazo County currently, uh, for their support of cost share arrangements, it would revert to the previous three-year methodology, which is around eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand based on that last realized year. So, uh, if, uh, this is not concluded or if Brazo County in the interim does not, uh, sign the renewal, uh, that the town had previously signed, uh, there is a, uh, operating cost that is currently not factored in, uh, to, uh, to budget deliberations for twenty eighteen, essentially a roughly two hundred thousand dollar shortfall, uh, potentially for twenty eighteen, uh, that the town would then need to, uh, to address in its interim and final budget.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. So I guess time is of the essence on this one. All right, so moving on to decision six point seven, the town of Drayton Valley Internal Committee Structures. And again, I'll provide, um, some brief, brief background on this. With internal committees, um, are the committees that are held by councillors and supported by administration. And we have come to the conclusion that, um, it'll be a little bit different than past council. We have three internal committee boards, one being sustainability, um, and we'll be kind of wrapping up the waste management and sustainability into one committee. And economic development, again, this is, um, different, I think, from, uh, discussions with all councillors, economic development is a priority for everyone here. And so we're going to, I'll be appointing ourselves or we'll be sitting on the Economic Development Committee if the motion is passed. And that will, um, be hashed out a little bit in the, in the coming week with our terms of reference. And finally, a budget and asset management committee, uh, where four delegates will possibly be named. And the purpose of that is not so much to, um, you know, get into administration's work, but to help guide the budget process as well as asset management process that will, um, help educate councillors, uh, to a better degree and for decision-making purposes. So with that said, um, we have a motion and, uh, we'll do each one individually, I believe, um, starting with this sustainability committee. Is there anyone that would like to make, uh, a motion on that? Councillor Peoples?
I move that council establish a sustainability committee and appoint councillor Nancy Dodds and councillor Farrell Wheeler.
Is there any comments on that? All in favor? It's passed. For the Economic Development Committee, is anyone like to make a motion? Nope, sorry. Councillor Dodds?
I move that council establish an Economic Development Committee and appoint all members of council to the committee.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor? And the Budget and Asset Management Committee. Councillor Buss?
I make a motion that council establish a Budget and Asset Management Committee and appoint councillor Buss, Amelia Gomana, Corey Peoples, and Farrell Wheeler.
Is there any comment? All in favor? All right. So those are internal committee structures. And I'll be encouraging all those committees to meet next week so we can, uh, hash out the, the terms of reference and, uh, start moving forward. So with that, before we get into the department reports, we will take a short break and meet no later then. And we will start with the department reports, Engineering and Development. Sonia Wigglesworth.
Good morning again. So we are finalizing our requirements for Alberta Environment to renew our approval for our permit to operate the waterworks system. And cell four, which was, um, down for some construction work or some rehabilitation work at our wastewater treatment plant is fully back online at this time.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions for the Engineering and Development? Okay, well, we will move on to seven point two, Community Services and FCSS.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. A few things, just working on the completion of capital projects for two thousand seventeen as well as recognizing that some may continue into two thousand eighteen. So of course, having to do the necessary paperwork and financial accounting for those projects. In particular, of course, projects where we've received, uh, funding assistance through Brazo County and Parkland County have to reconcile those reports, not only for two thousand seventeen, but also informing them what will be carried over into two thousand eighteen. Also, of course, dealing with the planning process for the two thousand eighteen capital budget and as Councillor Ballas pointed out, uh, some necessary changes at the omniplex as well to recognizing the type of usage that we see within the omniplex. All good, by the way. Also, uh, some significant time invested in, uh, managing reports and, uh, and grant accounting. So just to let council know that the major community facility grant for the Eleanor Pickup Art Center, the project, uh, now that we have received the as-built drawings, which was a deficiency from, uh, the contract, uh, are in place and so that project is now complete. And, um, I'm not too sure if I was discouraged or scared when they asked for what were the phase two drawings like. So we'll see what, uh, happens with phase two with the Eleanor Pickup Art Center. The second grant, of course, is, uh, FCM's Green Municipal Fund for the Aquatic Net Zero Study. Uh, that accounting has been done and submitted to FCM, uh, for completion this year. FCSS, just want to make mention that we had forty people attend the hoarding workshop. Many of those individuals attending that workshop, um, may not necessarily be, uh, with that situation, but are the individuals who are in direct or indirect contact with people who find themselves in that situation. So forty service workers, whether it's in social service or community service working, now have some skill sets to be able to help people within, uh, those situations within our community. So again, a great sort of training the trainer, uh, asset within, uh, our community. FCSS, of course, also deals with a number of programs, including the Snow Angels Program. So if there are volunteers out there who can help seniors or anybody with mobility issues with, uh, cleaning their sidewalks and their driveways, uh, that certainly helps out. And certainly we've seen an increase in the number of referrals, obviously with the economic downturn. FCSS will, of course, see an increase in referrals coming through the office of people who need assistance. So, uh, our staff certainly are staying busy with, uh, those contacts with the community. Also happy to see that, uh, within the omniplex and, uh, the Mackenzie Conference Center, that the usage in bookings, uh, certainly increasing from what we've seen from two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen is a happy relief to see the number of users coming in. And part of it, of course, is just the confidence within our community groups who are looking at, uh, going back to some of their supports in the past years and saying that, yes, they want to come back with their previous booking and their previous event. And, and I think we recognize that a lot of them are fundraising initiatives, uh, for what they do within the community. So happy to see that that is, uh, seeing some increase in uptake. And that, Mr. Mayor, is my report.
Do you have a, uh, kind of a percentage wise, the increase? Would it be like a ten percent, twenty percent? Do you have kind of a judge of that?
Well, in one area, I can give you specifically that we've had, uh, in two thousand seventeen, there were no weddings in the Mackenzie Conference Center. Next year, we have sex.
So an infinite increase.
That's quite an increase. But certainly in terms of, uh, the other bookings, I don't have a percentage for you, Mr. Mayor.
Any, uh, questions? Comments? Councillor Peoples?
While we were away at AUMA, uh, we ran into the Minister of Social Services at one of the, the suites. And, uh, he was telling us that there's going to be another twenty-five million dollars coming down the pipe to FCSS. Do you have any idea how that's going to affect us?
Similar to last year, uh, at Family and Community Support Services across the province received an incremental, uh, increase in funding, but that is timely simply because there had not been an increase in FCSS funding since two thousand and nine prior to that time. So, uh, it will be distributed to all municipalities who have, operate, uh, FCSS boards. To what percentage and what amount, I haven't been informed.
Councillor Buss?
Do you know whether that's going to be applied to their operating work or their, their granting work?
The past increase allowed us to apply most of it to the granting program.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Seven point three, Economic Development. I'll call Eric Burton up to the podium to give us a, a brief rundown on Economic Development.
Hi, good morning, good worship, council. So first of all, I want to say I'm really excited today. This is the closest thing that I get to Christmas in November. We have the hemp holiday social happening tonight. And not only do we have a lot of entrepreneurs and investors from the community coming together, but we have, uh, folks from across, uh, western Canada coming together. And, uh, because we have so many people coming, we're gonna, we're having a number of meetings, uh, leading up to that. They're, they're gonna be prompting meetings, but when you get, uh, experts from Saskatoon and Calgary, uh, who will be in Great Valley, we want to make sure that we get them together so we're able to help connect the dots and, and get a good understanding of how we can leverage, uh, their expertise here in Great Valley. So just to take a one step back, I want to provide a bit of strategic context for my report. And anyone who knows, who's heard this, knows I get excited about it and I could, I could spend the rest of the day on it, so I promise you I won't do that. But, so, in, uh, in two thousand and sixteen, we developed a Powerball Entrepreneur Strategy. And this was our strategy to develop the local economy and it focused on leveraging local talent, creativity, and investment to foster entrepreneurship and diversify the economy. And so in plain terms, what that means is you've got the business expertise in this community, you've got the, the investment dollars, the deep pockets that are in this community, and you've got the, the workforce in this community. What we want to do is leverage those assets to diversify the economy, right? And the way that we've done that is we've, uh, identified a specific and singular economic opportunity right here, and that's building the hemp industry, right? You have an industrial asset that is very unique to Alberta, it's u- unique to North America. And so you have an opportunity to build upon that specific asset and industry that not only has explosive potential today, but has long-term generational potential to transform the economy. And the best piece of it all is that your existing businesses are key in building that up. For example, you have, uh, oilfield businesses that use rig mats. Well, those businesses could be incubating hemp-based rig mats and using them in their own, uh, operations until they perfect it and then sell it to every other business. You've got an insulation company that could incubate a hemp, a hemp line, a whole new product that is lighter, cheaper, cleaner than conventional, right? So you have existing businesses that can leverage growth in this industry and become drivers of that. So we put together a hemp cluster project and, uh, brought the products on board, partnered with that, and it has three key components. The first is doing a market assessment. And this is what local entrepreneurs said was the first piece. They needed to get a crystal clear picture of what the market was so that they could focus in on the pressing opportunities. And we have helped them to do that. They have since hired five new employees, they've invested hundreds of thousands of dollars into capital, and they've built partnerships across Canada. Now we want to take that market intelligence and put it into the hands of local investors. And they're, they're seeing the same opportunity and they're saying, we want to invest in growing opportunities here in Great Valley. The third component is putting that market intelligence into the hands of entrepreneurs, right? So that they have the best intelligence in the industry so the Great Valley businesses can be the drivers of this. So, uh, that's kind of gives the backdrop of, uh, the, the strategy we're using to develop the economy. Since the election, we have had a, a, a business launch-in with the Chamber of Commerce, uh, where we raised funds for, uh, youth entrepreneur versary program. And that helps local youth to pursue studies in business and entrepreneurship. As a part of that, we facilitated a discussion about, uh, access to the labor force and ways to accelerate job growth and investment in the community. We met with hemp industry leaders from mental Ontario to get a better understanding of what they see as the opportunities and to highlight the strengths that, that we have. We've worked closely with Alberta Hemp Lines and I want to congratulate Councillor Peoples for being elected to the chair of that, that group. You know, that's a, that's a group that has, um, come together with a big picture vision, but really has needed the leadership. needed the leadership to get there, right? And the business focus to be able to get there. And I think that's immediately the indicator to coming together with recent meetings. And, you know, if we weren't sure already, Council Peoples chaired a meeting with the Agriculture Minister. And I'll suspect they'll want to touch on that, so I won't go into detail. But it's showing that the leadership that this council is already providing is shaping the landscape in this industry. We've also had a meeting with Your Worship and APMR Capital Partners in Calgary where we began the discussions with local investors to very, very good holdings to talk about building the first hemp investment fund in Canada. Again, that's because local investors have had a chance to see the market intelligence and want to be on the forefront of this industry. We're working with the Chamber. They have had some leadership change. Their president has decided as a result of a new career path that she wants to step aside and let the vice president take over the leadership of that. So I've been coaching different members of the executive and the board in working through that succession planning and ensuring that they continue to build on the strength that they have built over the last few months and years. And then the hemp holiday social. So this is an initiative of the staff of the CTC and myself working together to put all the puzzle pieces together. And it's been a really exciting opportunity. And while people are in town, we're going to be looking at what the opportunities are at the CTC, look at what the opportunities are in fiber specifically. I'll look forward to getting into more detail at another time. We're going to be getting people together for dinner, getting people together for breakfast to talk about investment and talking about what training programs could look like. So it's going to be 24 hours of brainstorming, how we're able to leverage all of the different opportunities and put them together in one coherent approach that accelerates the growth of this industry right here in Drake Valley. Finally, December 19th, I just got confirmation this morning that the Assistant Deputy Minister from Economic Development Trade would like to come out and meet with key stakeholders of the council. I believe you have it penciled in as a whole, the date. And she is eager to get out of the department office and get a sense of what's going on in the community around Alberta. And I've heard so much about Drake Valley, this is one of her first jobs.
All right. Thank you very much for that. It was a very in-depth. Any questions? Council Bots?
Manitoba has a fairly established hemp industry. I'm just wondering what experience has been, how far along they are, and if we've seen how they've gotten to where they are now and if there's ways that we can emulate that or improve upon it.
Yeah, absolutely. They do have a really strong industry. And what is interesting about this industry is that there are a wide range of different value chains that come off of the single crop, right? So for example, what you have is a stalk. So the stalk alone has three different value chains. The very middle of the stalk is called a herb, and it can be used in things like concrete. The outside is called bast, and it's long fiber, used to be used for rope back in the 30s, and is the strongest natural fiber in the world. And it can be used for things like corridors. And then when you split those, you create dust, which is, can be used as an industrial resin. So that's just a stalk. You also have the leaves, you also have the flower, and then you have the seed. These all have their own value chains. And the seed is the one that is the most prevalent commercialized value chain, right? Because hemp hearts or hemp oil, these are commercial things that are, that there's an existing demand for. And that is where Manitoba has a strong advantage in. But we also have seen it grow in Alberta, like in HempCo, is a major company that is now located in the Duke. And so their emphasis is starting around the seed part of the plant. They also do have a center as CIC. I apologize, I can't think of what that stands for. But it is a center that's supported by the province, looking at innovation. And there's a lot that we can draw from their expertise in that space. But one of the things that we have specific advantages is in the fiber. So that is what BCG focuses on. They use that long, vast fiber and they weave it together, or sorry, not weave it, they needle it together. And it can be applied in a absolutely enormous range of industrial applications. And why this is so important is that the seed is a commodity, right? Which means that it is subject to the ebb and flow of the markets, right? So markets are good right now and that, you know, makes, draws people in. But the fiber is not a commodity, it's a commodity, right? You build all sorts of things. So you could build shelving for airplanes out of this stuff, right? So it doesn't just ebb and flow with an international market. It is up to the creativity and business management of local entrepreneurs of what they want to make out of that feedstock. And right now, BCG has bought all of the fiber available in Alberta, bought all the fiber available in Canada, and they're about to start importing fiber from Europe, right? Which is, in order, which just doesn't make any sense when we can roll fiber right here. So we're about to see what has been a dormant supply chain, right? That was supported, in some cases, by the government funding. It is about to become animated because BCG, we have helped BCG find a market pull. And when the market starts pulling for BCG products, whether it be erosion control matting or insulation, that means BCG starts to pull on the corticators, the corticators start to pull from farmers, and it animates this whole system. And that's what we're seeing right before our eyes. So that's why it's an opportunity. And this isn't, this isn't happening in Manitoba like it is here. This is ground zero for that piece of the equation. And that's why the more focus we have on our specific strengths, the more likely we were able to establish a niche industry that nobody can compare with, right? Like we have the $20 million industrial asset, BioCom Siskiyou. We have the ability to turn that into an unassailable advantage in the industry. And that's what we're busy trying to do. And once we get that position, then other areas, they can focus on other pieces of the supply chain. Everyone's going to know that Drake Valley is the epicenter of the fiber.
Does that answer your question? Any other questions? Council Gomano?
CTC, I think, has talked about it being a business incubator for hemp and clean energy technology. You know, how does that tie in with this and where are we at with that process?
Yeah, so both the Powerball Entrepreneur Strategy and the Hemp Cluster Project in particular are designed to help bring the life of the CTC. You know, we have resources to do market assessment, business incubation and training, and investor facilitation within the Hemp Cluster Project. And that money was got for that purpose and is available to do that. And those are the same underlying principles that brought the CTC to existence, right? So really, we have resources to achieve the mandate with a clear project plan that has already not only been designed, but approved by a different government, and it's already showing signs of success. So in recent weeks, we've been working ever closer with CTC to make sure that there's an integrated approach. And now we have the opportunity to continue to build on that. I mean, the CTC is an amazing facility. And I mean, it is one of a wide range of just tremendous economic assets that this community has. The communities across Canada are envious of because of the vision and leadership that has gone in, laying the groundwork. In my view, the Hemp Cluster Project is an example of a more tactical way on how we did this going. And a big part of that is putting the private sector into the driver's seat. So the Powerball Entrepreneur Strategy can be broken down into a single sentence. So how can this leverage or advance local entrepreneurs? So every, every policy decision, every new piece of information, every option, the last of the lens should be applied, right? And when we do that, what we're doing is we're putting local entrepreneurs into the driver's seat. And the model we can use is, show me where the local entrepreneur is and let me help them get where they're going, right? Therefore, the public sector becomes a supporter of the private sector, right? And becomes a feeder of the ecosystem that is led by the private sector. And so, and I think we're starting to see a lot of success. So for example, with the Hemp Holiday Social, the reality is we don't have a lot of government people coming from different levels, right? Because that simply wasn't on the focus. I mean, we'll get there, but we'll get there once we get the private sector together and on the same page and driving the vision. And so I think that is a key piece of bringing the economic development of CTC components together in a successful way.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Thank you very much for that, Mr. -- oh, sorry. Council Ballas?
Thank you for that report. Other than hemp, are there other avenues of economic development being explored?
Yeah, so initially, what we did was we took a multi-sector approach, right? So we looked, we worked in retail to try to reach out, find entrepreneurs, and then help identify solutions. We worked in tourism. We did a number of tourism roundtables that led to a tourism strategy session, which then led to an industry training session. And in that case, the economic, the Drake Valley Hospitality Tourism Authority has recently hired an executive director who is able to kind of step into an already established ecosystem, right? So what we're trying to do is build ecosystems, to build the capacity of the community across different sectors. We did the same thing in bioindustrial, and that is how we were able to identify hemp as the preeminent opportunity. The other one within the bioindustrial sector was biochar, which is also an opportunity. So in addition, we also worked with the arts and culture community, helped them build capacity. So what we've tried to do is build the capacity in different sectors and in doing so, find the live wires, right? Find the people that are going to build businesses, we're going to be hiring, we're going to invest and support them. So hemp, we're using as a flagship because it's, A, a unique opportunity, and it helps to focus the mind. But if you look under the surface of the hemp project, there are more fundamental things at play. One is, we're facilitating local investment, right? So if we can facilitate local investment of people who made money in one sector and help them explore opportunities in another sector, we can repeat that process year in, year out, right? It has nothing to do with hemp. Hemp is the opportunity that we're helping receive today, but it's more the process in local people investing in local opportunities. Secondarily, the entrepreneur training and business incubation program, we're building a program for hemp. But tomorrow, we could do the same thing, run the same program with a different sector, right? So we're using it as a, again, a flagship to build community capacity to systematically develop the economy and systematically diversify the economy. So now, if tomorrow they said, well, we should do that in other areas, absolutely. We can do that because we've already begun to build the tools for that.
All right. So now that the Economic Committee meeting has met, Council Dots?
What involvement, participation do we have with women in business?
We haven't had a lot of involvement with women in business. So I have a lot of respect in a different relationship with one company, with Brazos County. And so what we do, we've coordinated our efforts across the board in economic development. So we do meet to get an understanding of what each other are doing. It hasn't kind of reached to a policy level discussion, which is more about professionals working together. So in the case of the women in business, that she's been leading that and I support her in doing that. And, you know, we look for opportunities to work together. We've also had a lot of volunteer leaders who have been leading that. But I look forward to any advice or recommendations on how I can play a role in continuing to build on that. Because I think it's an example of entrepreneurs supporting entrepreneurs, which is the very most important thing. We're going to build an entrepreneurial culture. We need entrepreneurs to be there for other entrepreneurs. And so women in business that's leading the way in building that inclusive community. And if we can roll that across Drake Valley, we're going to see a lot of success.
Okay. Any more? All right. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Burton. 7.4 is the emergency services, but I don't know if -- oh, there he is, right there.
Good morning, Your Worship. A member of the council, a statement for a chief officer today, Chief Camilla Lassler. Today, we'll be going through the September October stats, as well as some information on what has happened, the various events as well. So for the September calls, the fire services responded to a total of 45 calls. 18 of those calls were within the town of Drake Valley, and 17 calls were within the county. Some of the calls that we responded to were rubbish and grass fires, more vehicle incidents, alarm calls, assisted agency, whether it's EMS or police, as well as miscellaneous calls and fires. Some of the calls that we respond to, just to give you a little bit of a background to kind of have a little word to what exactly constitutes one call compared to the other. So fire calls tend to be called where there's obviously a fire, about half a dollar value attached to it. The rubbish and grass fires tend to be as described, a non-dollar value loss fires. More vehicle collisions, so you can know involving vehicles. Rescue calls, so that could be anything with people trapped or, you know, that nature, or we respond to. Alarm calls, that does take a big portion of our calls. Those can be anything from accidental, a false alarm that we refer to, to mechanical issues with the equipment or activations of systems that don't really follow up your fires. So say you're cooking something and you have a small fire on the stove, the bogus fire to extend past that stove, and there was enough smoke to activate the alarm. The alarm activated, we've got a call that would help you, an alarm call, or it's the way to actually fire. Assisted other agencies, like I mentioned, so that could be assisted EMS or police, whether it's a lift assist, or it could be just a public assist. If you have someone that's stuck in an elevator, or if you have a patient that needs a little bit of extra help to move them from to an ambulance or a hospital, whatnot. And there's always those miscellaneous calls. So for this year, we did have one miscellaneous call, which was a T-line, which was a system. For October, a little slower on call volume. Services responded to 21 calls, 10 of those being in town, 11 of those being in county. And that's been quite a few. Our calls, rubbish and grass fire calls, alarm calls, and assisted other agencies. One thing that has come up in the argument of talking about the stats and calls and how we're performing, the Office of Fire Commissioners from Alberta Municipal Affairs just released a 10-year report. This report was posted on the web November 27th. So I have fully set the whole So I have fully, uh, set the whole report, there's a lot of information in there, but I do want to share some of the big highlights on there that are very prominent right off the first page. So they are a 10-year fire loss for municipalities, so you can check every municipality in Alberta and see what their stats are for, for calls, fire calls. For, uh, what we're doing for that 10-year, we respond to 112 fire calls. Uh, the numbers in 2007, 2008, 2009, so those early, early years, we were looking at the department, uh, calling, going to 10, 20, 30 calls a year to respond to calls. Uh, in the later years, so 2016, 2015, 2014, all of those numbers are five by five for each of those years. So, uh, not saying that there's less fires, uh, well, I am saying there's less fires. There's less fires here in Brazel County. It's not that we have less population, we actually have an increase in population, we have a lot of this stuff that's going on there. I think what a big portion of that has to do is how we handle fires. And the best way to handle fire isn't to have them, is to educate the public, is to make them aware. So one of the things that we do, uh, very strongly, and has been advocated for many years, is different fire prevention programs. So that kind of leads me to the next item of what we do. So not only can we respond to calls, it's all those things that aren't on paper, aren't on calls, it's not a flashing light, it's not a fire department showing you how to do your doorstep, it's that, uh, fire prevention component. So some of you, uh, may or may not be aware, um, there's a national fire prevention campaign that runs this, like, in, in October for this year. That was from October 8th to 14th. Uh, we go a lot, above and beyond, we actually do a whole month of fire prevention. So we start at the beginning of, uh, October, and we run until the end of October and do a full fire prevention, uh, as well, we do fire prevention throughout the year, uh, wherever we can, whether it's school tours, or going talking to the public, or just engaging the public as we can. So in regards to our October fire prevention, we had, once again, a very successful year. Uh, we did many events, uh, we did, started in schools, if you want to teach parents about fire safety, you have to start with the kids. They're the best venue for us to, to go and get to homes and educate them, home over the, the fire safety. So we do the grade ones, uh, smoke alarms, so they get to know what smoke alarm, what alarm it is, does, and, and what to do if there is an alarm. So we go through every school within Drake Valley, as well as maybe cooperate with the leadership of Ratten and with, with this. For grade fives, uh, we identified a couple of years back that, that they're starting to become a little bit more dependent, and they're starting to, uh, cook and be engaged in kitchens. So we felt it was important to educate them in fire safety, in kitchen safety. Grade eights, uh, we go and visit, we do, uh, fire stewardship programs, which is, uh, for the higher levels, for the kids. As well as we do have some adult programs, uh, we talk, we have senior programs, so we're not just, uh, for the kids, but getting help there with the adults as well. A couple of other partnerships that we run, uh, one's very popular, and, uh, we have a local business that supports us, which is wonderful, it's Boston Pizza, and we have Pizza delivery system program, that we ran for a couple of years. Uh, so, uh, you order food from Boston Pizza, it gets delivered by a fire truck. Uh, we ask that we go to your home, we check for smoke detector, for smoke to go through reports, we get a discount from the truck. A lot of people wait for that, uh, this year, we had five fire trucks running around throughout the block because that, that was a lot of interest for that, so that was awesome. Uh, we've been running the Merrick Hopkins, uh, program for a few years, which is a, a company out of LeDuke that does chimney sweeps. So we bring them in for two or three days, depending on how many, uh, attrista, uh, things we have, and they go in and they claim and certify chimneys for both town and county residents. Uh, and because we can bring them in, they give a, a reduced rate, so then we can, then in turn pass that reduced rate to the owners. So they get, uh, the same, uh, service at a lower rate, and they've been working wonderful for a few years, and we've actually seen that decrease in chimney fires, uh, that we responded to, uh, before these programs started. Uh, we also, uh, did, uh, fire prevention, uh, and engaged, uh, the whole community. So we went out and met with the public, uh, for that venue, uh, so we engaged them at the hockey game, and kind of gave them a little visibility. In addition, we did three open houses, uh, each of our stations, one in Lodge Bowl, uh, which we had a good turnout in Ratten, which we had excellent turnout, uh, as every year, it seems like the whole community comes out, supports us there. And as well, we had a tremendous turnout, uh, once again, for, uh, for Drake. I think we, uh, budgeted for 500 people to come in, uh, based on our food venue, and then we had to go to the store to get more food, that, that much of a turnout. Uh, I know the kids, uh, up and down the ladders, putting on fires, putting on gear. Uh, I think about, we're supposed to run at eight o'clock, about 8:50, we're like, okay, no, we have to stop, because at some point we have to go home. And the last item that we added as well, it's although not fire-related, but it is safety-related, we did distracted texting program, something, uh, that we've, uh, done in this, in the third year that we get into it, and just the importance of, uh, some of the safety aspects when it comes down to texting, how, uh, gives, interact with the world, uh, when they're just looking for their phone, did not actually see what's going on. So that has been, uh, complementing some of the programs that have been running through this program within Hemp.
All right. Well, thank you for that very detailed report, and, uh, definitely the, the 10-year fire loss was an interesting piece. It seems like the education is, uh, possibly working. And is there any questions or comments that we have on fire involvement? Sorry, two of them? I will start with Councilor.
Um, just a comment, uh, thank you very much, uh, for all you do for the fire prevention, and, uh, my son loves fire trucks, and they like, uh, he likes to see the, the fire that coming, uh, when the Boston Pizza delivers pizza. And, uh, I like that it's for fun, not for real. Thank you.
Councilor Ballas.
Uh, when you say assist other agencies, i- is that like the RCMP, or who are you assisting?
So typically for assisted agencies would be EMS and police. Uh, so, uh, for example, uh, we've had in the past, uh, RCMP were looking for an individual, uh, or trying to get, uh, although maybe it wasn't a vehicle incident, uh, it did involve a vehicle, uh, we may come up to assist to secure that vehicle. When it comes down to for looking for people, uh, one of the things we did in the past was through the use of thermal imaging cameras, we were able to try to track down, uh, possible footsteps of where that individual, uh, because they can, uh, for their potential downtime, although it's not visible to the naked eye, the thermal imaging can actually sense the temperature difference based on, uh, a floor that somebody has walked over and has transferred some heat to it. So that would be, uh, those instances, uh, sometimes we may get to call RCMP if, uh, they have, uh, a removal of a victim, uh, through various instances, and maybe that individuals, uh, prepares a situation or needs a technical way of getting them out, if they're trapped in something, they would call on us to help them extricate that individual. With EMS, tends to be predominantly the agency that we assist, uh, so we assist them sometimes, uh, for, uh, staff that they have, we may respond to, uh, two members, and they might just need extra hands to grab, uh, to lift, uh, individual, uh, as well as a lot of our medical calls, uh, we assist EMS and respond to medical calls, uh, because they may or may not be delayed, so we still want to have that, uh, help, uh, set up, in a lot of cases that are already there. Thanks for coming out, we don't need you to tell me path, don't turn around, but at least there is that response to the call.
Thank you. And the second thing is, uh, September, October calls, uh, town versus, uh, the county is two to one, is that the normal trend?
Typically, we see a, a fairly even split. Uh, you do have some, uh, different times of years, uh, where we'll see an increase in the rural community, uh, one being when we have high, uh, grass fire seasons or high weather patterns that dictate, we'll see an increase of that, uh, as well as depending on what, uh, the weather is in winter time, uh, for roads. Although, uh, when it snows in county, it snows in town, so for vehicles to get to prepare the instances, uh, both sides, typically is fairly even, uh, but the fluctuation will be.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to 7.5, the CAO report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, Council. Since, uh, the organizational meeting, uh, and I don't think a surprise to Council, an awful lot of administration's activities have been around, uh, transition orientation activities and supports, as well as, uh, budget and budget preparatory work, uh, for the 2018 interim budget, uh, that Council will be considering here in the very near future. Um, uh, related to that, uh, collective bargaining with the towns' union, uh, QP Local 2515 has commenced. 2017, as Council is aware, is the, uh, the last year of our current agreement. Uh, two days of bargaining, uh, have already ensued, that was November 2nd and 3rd. Uh, we had two additional days scheduled for later this week, Thursday, Friday, uh, but, uh, as of yesterday, they have been postponed at the union's request. Uh, we are just now working on, uh, finding alternate dates, uh, to resume collective bargaining with our union. Um, I wanted to make mention, uh, part of, uh, the orientation, uh, aspects along those lines, uh, we have been working on a larger briefing, uh, for, for Council, just in terms of the town's safety, occupational health and safety and other, uh, programs. I, I know Councilor Gomana had sent me a note, uh, inquiring about that from just a general aspect. Uh, we were holding because we are just awaiting completion and the results of our certificate of recognition external audit, uh, a requirement, uh, that we are required to go through every three years from the Alberta Municipal Health and Safety Association. Uh, I actually received, uh, an email this morning, uh, from our safety coordinator while we were in chambers, uh, that our audit has been completed, uh, and, uh, we have received a 90% aggregate, um, uh, score in our audit, uh, which, uh, it's probably hard for me to understate how significant that is, uh, as some members of Council are aware. And from this, I point to, uh, to the mayor and the deputy mayor, who, uh, is not with us today, uh, they would be aware of, uh, the efforts and the additional attention that has been required to be brought to bear to this element of town operations over the, uh, the past couple of years. And, um, in, um, in a lot of ways, this, uh, this result now, uh, from an external auditor, it's performed by a third-party auditor that is, uh, not of the town's choosing, and the auditor as well, uh, gets to decide, uh, what areas of town operations are actually audited, uh, other than administration and public works must always be, uh, part of the external audit. Uh, so a 90% score, uh, 80% is what you require as a threshold for pass, uh, in aggregate along those lines, but a 90% score, uh, I think is, um, a very appropriate recognition of the time, effort, and expense that has been brought to bear in the last couple of years particularly, in ensuring that there's continuous improvement in our health and safety program, and that where there are issues, that we address them and put in place, uh, the necessary processes and checks, uh, that ensure that we not only comply, uh, but exceed, uh, those elements that we were required to on an ongoing basis. Uh, just very briefly, in the past month, the number of meetings and external aspects, uh, that, uh, myself and other members of administration have been involved in, uh, including the, uh, the last, uh, Drayton Valley Hospitality Tourism Association Board meeting on October 31st. Uh, I mentioned, uh, along with myself, uh, the Director of Corporate Services and the Human Resources Coordinator, uh, are the, uh, negotiating committee for the, uh, the employer, uh, with collective bargaining, uh, that was on the 2nd and 3rd. Um, uh, participation in FCM, Federation of Canadian Municipality Training for the International Local Economic Development Project, uh, that the town is involved with, uh, that was, uh, out of province on November 16th and 17th. Uh, very pleased to attend and volunteer at our last community dinner, uh, which was on the evening of November 21st. Uh, I, uh, I know that some members of Council were also in attendance. Um, uh, that was sponsored by the Town of Drayton Valley and Brazel County jointly. I'm very pleased also that the volunteer compliment was, uh, majorly from the Town of Drayton Valley, and so I, uh, I thank, uh, my staff and other volunteers who participated in serving the meals that night, uh, over 200 plates, my understanding, uh, were served, uh, for the time of dinner. Um, attended, uh, a portion of the AUMA Annual Convention, uh, November 21st and 23rd, and also I was in Edmonton on the 24th for meetings with the Alberta Capital Finance Authority and Northwest College. And so perhaps with that, I'll stop, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, we can move forward.
All right. So any questions, comments for Mr. Dibbin? Okay. Well, we'll move to 8.0, Council reports, starting at 8.1, the Councilor Buss.
Thank you. Um, the month was a busy month, and I'll start there. The beginning of the month was, uh, which was a conference, um, it's an introductory training session, municipal governance, covering a wide range of topics that are important to councilors, especially to new ones. I attended with Councilor Gomana, and it's very informative. Um, you have to win up some of the chat. And the two key takeaways from this I want to discuss, uh, I'll bring to Council and to administration for further review. Um, the first is finance and budget transparency, this was an issue during the election, and it was discussed in a variety of ways at Unit 101. Um, the common internal committee for councils is a finance committee, which the town did not previously have. We discussed this as a council, and the, part of the reason is that all the councils want to be on the finance committee. Um, and we did decide to have this budget management committee, which looked at, it's a compilation of the finance and the, um, the management functions, and it has four people, two focused on each. Um, that's important for long-term budgeting, our capital budgeting as well, or, uh, budgeting as offering, uh, to determine our ability to, um, acquire assets and maintain our assets. Um, an issue that came up with, these were the ones for discussion, was the importance of communicating with our citizens, and just communicating to them, pursuing citizen engagement. So we have to bring our people in to our discussions and our thought center deliberations because they have a tremendous amount of insight and experience that is useful for us. And so I want us to look at how we can further promote, um, just a simple resource from AUMA, they have on their website, they have a citizen engagement manual, which is an interesting read, as well as social media. Um, recommendations more specifically will be to review our budget setting process, um, to discuss the open versus the closed sessions, and what is revealed in public, and to what extent, um, that is advertised, both in the paper and on Facebook. Um, a possible review to extent we can publicly disclose, uh, financial information for the, the, that have key touchpoints for citizens, specifically, uh, ETT, ETC, removal on the platform, all of this is important to us, um, and their cost should be known to the public, and so we'll discuss how to do that. And, and, um, will determine how to, and where it's appropriate to actively seek input from the community, um, in our decision-making, um, so polls and things of that nature, or just talking to people. Um, step that I want to bring to Council, uh, so the finance and budget transparency, the second is budget formatting. So we would, that's a means of, and basically, uh, good budgets versus bad budgets. Um, well, the next step back, the budget, this is where we'll spend our money, and as a council, it reflects priorities, it reflects what's important to us to pay for, um, to provide the minimum services required under the MGA. And that budget also provides, tends to administration and the departmental staff for spending for the year, what we want them to spend the money on. Because we decide where it's, or how, we decide what we, what we want to see accomplished with it. And so change, of course, with the size of the organization, um, and the multitude of budget setting, uh, budget reporting here, um, create documents in a way that is accessible to Council and useful to Council, um, to provide the way for us that we can make good decisions is, is important. Um, and so when we do, good versus bad, I mean, a budget has a few different characteristics. For example, it said, you know, it looks like a fairly standard budget that you would see in, in everyday life, but not necessarily detailed, so you could have multiple lines for the same expenditure, such as, you know, such requirements could be lumped under, um, labor, right? Or personnel, or something to that effect. Um, there's not good grouping of items so that we can clearly see, uh, where, where the money is changing, or where the costs are being incurred. or where the costs are being incurred. And a budget doesn't connect the spending with our priorities. So when we provided a good budget for examples for our fire department, they said, okay, this is revenue for the last four years, this is what we're spending today, and this is what we want to spend for the next three years, and these are the number of service calls we expect to do, this is where we increase our volunteer budget, volunteer coordinator budget, to increase the number of volunteers, we have to keep our paid staff lower, of that nature. And so more of that qualitative information built into our budget setting in order to provide greater transparency to the public, as well as greater ability for the council to understand what we're voting for, it's a high priority. And I'll leave that for me to one. I'm a newly appointed member, but we didn't meet as a whole for a presidential meeting, because we're waiting for today's appointment of Jeanette to fill the ranks, so that will happen on Friday. It was great, thank you very much to Jeanette, Chamber of Commerce, for putting on a good show, it's fun to be, and then able to watch it for a bit after. And then breakfast with the guys, I attended with his worship, Michael Dirkton, Counselor Peoples was there as well, as Counselor Gomana, I believe? No, no, he wasn't. What was it? Interesting presentation, that was focused on domestic abuse, basically, and it's a specific point, and given the statistics we saw from Sergeant Calhoun this morning. So interesting event, not just for guys, a third year that they've had it, and so I was happy to attend and look forward to it in the future, and that's my report.
All right. Thank you for that detailed report, Counselor Ballas.
Well, the month of November's been a very busy month. We started off basically with some media training back in November 3rd, then Munis 101, as Eric has mentioned, in La Colman, the 4th and the 5th, which is an excellent course, highly informative, great networking opportunities, and if anyone hasn't taken that course, I would highly recommend that they do so as soon as possible. From there, went to the AUMA on November 22nd, 24th, attended the Community Foundation Luncheon, Christmas Parade, Festival of Trees, Shaken Drayton, so it's been a busy time. I've been appointed to the Legacy Committee, and unfortunately, they had a meeting when I was away, so neither myself or my alternate could attend. Also appointed to the Drayton Valley Community Foundation, and which will be having their AGM on December 4th, and which all will be attending. We also did a tour of all the town facilities, or most of them, and it was very informative. So the month of November's been a very productive and busy month.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Peoples.
Thank you, your word. I will agree with everybody else, November has been incredibly busy, but I just want to kind of give a shout out to our counsel and administration, we've been running, since we've been elected, we have wasted no time, there has, this is a council that's ready to get things done, and I sure appreciate all the help and support and cooperation from administration. On November 2nd, I attended the hemp lines meeting, I've been briefed by Christina and Eric as to some of the history of the hemp lines, and after that meeting, I saw the potential for the regional chain, and I was actually appointed the Chair of the Alberta Hemp Lines. We can see that we're set up to lead North America, we already are really on the ground, ready to lead North America in the hemp industry, especially industrial hemp, and we see great opportunity there. On the 3rd, we were in media training, which was great, learned what to say, it's a problem, I say too much. My second son, Cooper, was born, and gotta say that, my wife's a champ, and my kids got them. And that was a fantastic way to go, Chamber, you guys put on a great event, and it was fun throwing candy at kids and gloves at adults, it was a great event, I had a great time, and good job to whoever decorated the float, I know somebody put some work in at the town, and give them a shout out, or give them a big round of applause, thank you, awesome. And that's not just because we're a good-looking council. I've attended the first Eagle Point meetup and meeting since being appointed to that committee, and they have a new director, we've been going through a lot of stuff, they've been having a few funding issues, so we're trying to figure out, actually gonna have to dip into the reserves a little bit, just to kind of sustain themselves, until they get some of the funding that they are expected to receive in the new year. So just to kind of carry them over to the next quarter, and then it will be paid back, but it's a trend that we need to get away from, they need to be like we want to. On November 24th, I was also there for breakfast with the guys, I'd be all for changing it to brunch with the guys, because seven o'clock in the morning is too early for me, but the room was packed, it was full of people, I think going forward, it could be potential for it to be a much bigger room, it was great, that conversation started just about what was going on in reality, in our society. On November 22nd, I had a meeting with our attorney, Mark Smith, Eric Burden was there as well, and we had a few members from Alberta Hemp Lines, including Bart Gionne there as well, to meet with our Minister of Agriculture, Minister Carle, we laid out the potential for the hemp supply chain, everything that we have late, that we are looking for, and the meeting went very, very well, it's looking like we're gonna have a couple of different ADMs that we're gonna be working with from the government, and it's setting us up, the framework has already been set, the investors at the table, and with the region working together, we are setting ourselves up to very quickly set standard across Canada for the hemp industry, so put some exciting, exciting stuff going on in that area. After my meeting, I headed over for eight, from the 22nd and 24th, and it's a fantastic conference, there's some really great sessions, and in our next meeting, I'll have my conference report all laid out with all the info, but yeah, it's been a busy month, it's been a very, very fun month. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Batts?
I agree, it's been a very, very busy month, very exciting, and thank you, administration, for your patience with us. So October 25th, I attended the Eleanor Pickup Arts Center Committee meeting, and we have received Community Foundation grant for the screen and the projector, we discussed considering naming the stage lobby bathroom after sponsors. Then on, I jumped into media training with everybody else, then on November 9th, I attended the Ad Hoc 60th Anniversary Committee meeting. December 31st is our winter festival at Discovery Park from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., we will have Ice on White, they are confirmed for ice skating, fire pit, skating, possibly thunder, partnering up with EPBR and Pembina Pipeline. Then I attended the Light Up Parade, Festival of Trees Gala, and November 21st to November 24th, the AUMA Conference in Calgary as well, and that is it.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Gomana?
Thank you, I agree, busy few weeks, had the privilege of ending my first Pembina Fish and Recruitment Program, meeting on October 30th, and the Homelessness and Poverty Reduction Committee meeting on November 6th. I also had the opportunity to attend Munis 101, like Counselor Ballas mentioned, it's wealth of information, and it's very good that everybody can attend that as soon as possible. AUMA Conference last week with my council colleagues, very good occasion for networking, as well as we discussed about how we can improve public engagement, and as Counselor Batts mentioned about financial transparency, and transparency as a whole. Also attended the Community Foundation's AGM, amazing to see amount of impact Community Foundation making on our community. It was fun to be part of the Light Up Parade on November 17th, the floats were beautiful, especially the town float for 60th anniversary, and kudos to the hard work all of you guys did for that. It started a bit chilly, but I guess as usual, after a bit of walking, everything was good. We also had a huge turnout this year, and I have to thank Renway Chamber of Commerce for organizing that event as well. I also attended the Festival of Trees event organized by Health Services Foundation, and last Saturday, Shaking and Drayton, organized by Human Helping Humans, such great organizations, doing wonderful uplifting things for our community. Also had a great meal at the community dinner, thank you for all the volunteers, and FCS is for organizing the event for this month and every month. That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you. And some guests waiting, and the beauty about going last is everyone covers most of the topics, so I'll keep this fairly brief. We did have the media training, and for all the media out there, we learned how to answer questions without actually saying anything, so that's make your job easier. I had the privilege of speaking on behalf of the town at the Pembina Pipeline, their new building, it's always encouraging to see some kind of development in town, as limited as it is, but Pembina Pipeline has always been good to our community, so it was a fun event to attend there. I also had the privilege of attending the Remembrance Day Ceremony in a new capacity, other than just standing in the crowd, and I enjoyed that and the experience there. And then I've more or less been trying to learn everything that I need to in my new role, and I appreciate counsel and all of administration in supporting me in that, and maybe by the time four years is up, I'll have it figured out, but let's not hold our breath. But, yeah, and other than that, AUMA, I had a lot of positive conversations with a few people, and as Eric mentioned, some conversations on hemp, and I will be doing a short talk today, or tonight, at the Hemp Holiday Social, so anyone that's not aware of it should attend, so, and that is it, and we will move to nine point O, information items, I unfortunately have to read these all. Nine point one, North American Headwaters Alliance Steering Committee and Technical Advisory Committee Meeting Minutes for April 20th, 2017, and First Strategic Planning Session Workshop Summary of April 20th, 2017, Economic Development Committee Meeting Notes, Childcare Operation Board Meeting Minutes, zoo foundation meeting minutes, Catholic, Star Catholic Board Highlights, Drayton Valley and District, Legacy Project Society Meeting Minutes, Traffic Advisory Committee Notes, Correspondence of the Office of the Minister of Finance and Yellowhead Regional Library Board Meeting Minutes, RCMP Statistics, Drayton Valley, Brazu County Fire Service Statistics, can I get a motion to accept these as information? Counselor Peoples, all in favor? And this meeting is adjourned, and we will move.